Dr. Bishop, Dr. Stock will be happy to provide any input, but I think.
In addition, there might be some after the middle school presentation tonight at the meeting? Oh, sorry.
Yes, and not only the amendments now, but there might be some later with information regarding the middle school committee report. That also might generate things. So we just thought we could talk about that. There was a request on more detailed information. The letter itself had some indicators for revenue. But if the board needed any more detail, Andy's here to add that. But that also might generate some changes in what was presented already.
So are we, are there documents online that we can reference? Or I haven't actually logged in yet, so.
For documents board? They were sent to your email.
Okay, great.
They were sent to your email?
Yeah.
What one would you like? Madam President?
Mr. Delway just showed up.
Let's look at the one with the most changes first.
That would be Member Foster's would probably be the most discussion.
Okay.
And we can give them a second breath.
Madam President, to that question. Because usually our things are online after this. Would we want to have that public or no?
They're not public, they're not posted yet.
Not posted?
Yeah.
Reading them into the record?
Do you want me to read them?
Yeah.
Okay. The first amendment by Member Foster is to amend the FY 1920 preliminary budget by moving legal settlements and judgments from the basic tax limitation to under plus exclusions. And it's at the very end of the budget book on page 476, where you can see the formula we use for determining taxes allowable under the charter limit versus limited funding and transferred services. So we have been working with the municipality. I think most everyone agrees that it's a sound practice to be able to do this. We don't know that it would result in additional money, certainly not this next year because the city's already capped out how much they're going to give us. But from the municipal director of office management budget, pretty much anyone involved, they believe this would be a sound practice. We have to work out the actual specifics as to whether we produce the bills over a calendar year versus a fiscal year. And so we still have some pieces to work out as to how much that would actually be.
So. Given that we'll be probably amending the budget later this semester, is this something that after you have time to discuss that with the municipality, we could, is there any harm in waiting? You know, let's say May or June, the legislature approves the budget. If we do it then?
Through the President, Member Hilli. There is, if we want to get it on there, we do need to get it in there soon. We need to set the mill rates in April. So they got to have all their stuff by then before the legislature's going to get wrapped up. The other, the underlying issue though seems to be there's no provision in state statute for us to allow these exclusions in judgment to be able to up the amount the state says the Muni can give us. So while the Muni may allow us to get more revenue based on that formula and the upper limit, the state is not going to be as inclined to let us do that based on their statutes.
But the state has not opined on that specific topic, have they?
Through the Chair, no, that we have not gotten a finger from the state.
So functionally, is there any, all this amendment does is move it as a line item in the budget, opening the possibility for something for the municipality might or might not do, but there's no foreseeable harm in moving this line item?
There would be no harm in doing this. It's a pretty sound accounting practice. You know, I'm sure when people were around, when the very first state foundation formula came out, they didn't envision it changing, but it did subsequently change. It might be potentially, whether we get an answer back from the state saying it would help us this next school year, or whether it would prompt future legislation to allow it in the future, at the very least, it's a sound accounting practice.
So, no harm, no foul?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I just, just to explain to me, it sounds like the Muni is on a calendar year? Okay.
That's correct. Our fiscal years are six months apart. So we would just have to figure out how we break out the bills from legal settlements to be able to produce that, to make it clean. The Muni does not budget for litigation. They have a, so they have it separate. So they're able to, at the end of their fiscal year, look at their litigation costs throughout the year and add that to the tax rate for the following fiscal year. It doesn't necessarily apply to us cleanly at this time. Again, though, the law changes all the time. I mean, it's certainly a sound practice that even if it doesn't benefit directly this year, it certainly has potential in future years to be of benefit.
And so when you say that they've already set their budget, they potentially could provide, if we could work out the details, they could provide something starting in their fiscal year of 2020?
It would be for their litigation, not our litigation.
Okay.
And that's what's going back and forth. You know, really, we're looking at, will the state allow us to take that out of the cap and make it separate? Or do we include that because it's part of our general fund? It, I think there's several potential actions in the future to include, and we have to find out if it's acceptable from both an accounting practice, government accounting, as well as from the state, you know, potentially to operate more like the city where their general operating fund does not cover litigations. In fact, they don't budget for it at all, which is how they can separate this out at the end of a fiscal year and recoup through the next fiscal year's taxes, the additional funds to cover those costs. And this may very well result in other future changes within the district. Certainly would have to be at state level if we want to have those as separate exclusionary costs. I think this really is, is really just setting the cornerstone in place for continuing to push this through and see where it goes.
All right, next one.
Okay, number two. It is to amend the 1920 preliminary budget by allocating $250,000 of the resources made available from moving legal settlements/judgments to plus exclusions to invest in an independent consultant study to develop a comprehensive review of the mental health needs of all ASD students with the goal of providing high-quality mental health support service for all students while seeking improvements in the effectiveness and efficiency of the delivery of mental health services for our students and families. And this kind of goes back, and I will certainly defer to Member Foster to articulate better, but we don't know at this time if the, if moving the legal settlements will result in direct additional funding.
And I have no objection to that characterization and no objection to moving this forward with that understanding. So that to the extent that we are successful, this would trigger. If it doesn't, it would not trigger. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The third one is to amend the FY 1920 preliminary budget by allocating $100,000 of the unrestricted health insurance fund reserve to invest in an independent consultant study to evaluate opportunities to reduce costs and improve the value of the health plans and medical services provided to all of our employees. So shortly put, $100,000 for an independent consultant to reduce future health costs.
Mark, wasn't there something, I thought that when we looked at this, there you had a little caveat next to it that said possibly in two years?
That was our caveat.
Oh, that was your caveat? Okay.
And it was just, Madam President, it was just in regard to VERA because we don't have much, any kind of trend data. But I believe this is, oh.
Sorry, sorry. The caveat was in regard to VERA specifically because we had discussed that already with doing that, just in our own insurance pool, the district's self-insurance. And at the time, when we met last October, we decided internally to wait till we had some trend data. It looked good. We've shared with the board savings, however, and, you know, the services seem to be, you know, the actual use of it seemed to be liked, if you will, anecdotally. But because any given year could be different based on people's health and like one big bill, we decided to at least give it a trend, which two points at least. But that was not in relation to the entire district. That was specifically to the self-insurance. And my understanding is, how I read this, it would be to the entire district, which includes other insurance providers.
That's the intent. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, I think that makes sense for the VERA piece of it. How big a piece is that in the scheme of the scope of number three?
It kind of depends on whether the state approaches statewide health insurance or health accounts this year during the legislative session. It's been discussed to merge all school districts together. I haven't seen a bill yet. I haven't seen any of the governor's new bills. I suspect they're coming out in the next week or two. So it's hard to say what's hidden in those bills. But certainly, it has been discussed openly that a way potentially to reduce healthcare costs is to have more people in your health service fund or in your insurance umbrella. And the more people you have, potentially reducing the cost. But again, I've heard it spoken on talk show radio and.
May I? It actually goes back to the history. There's about five to seven years ago that a study was recommended to be done, and the state legislature commissioned this study. Oh, thanks. And there was a recommendation, basically a simple recommendation, that more covered lives and pooling is essential. They said, however, do not combine it. At that time, they had one statement that said, do not combine it with the state's retirement health fund because that group of people actually cost the most. We would, it goes to age, you know. So, but they did recommend that perhaps in this study, and I can, I'll have to get the number because it was under a bill years ago, that they recommended to look into districts pooling. But at that time, there were quite a few districts with self-insurance and just in different individual ones, and it didn't go anywhere. But the recommend, they had a very strong, excuse me, recommendation from the Department of Admin that said, do not include it with the retiree. Don't create a bigger group in the state of Alaska, retirement health insurance. That was one clear statement. So I think that this is just resurfacing. It was probably, this is my third year here, second year there. So it was probably five to six years ago, and it was a study that we could research and pull out if perhaps that might be resurfaced. I think that's what Jim's talking about, so.
I just didn't know the terminology. I forgot pooling.
Yeah. Ms. Mitchell?
So if that happened, the need for this would potentially go away because the state would be doing that? Or would we still?
Mr. Foster?
I believe we would want to independently evaluate the opportunity from our perspective, which may or may not coincide with the state's perspective.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And then there's just also the bigger elephant in the room, that our healthcare involves committees, not just strict state legislature or school boards. It's actually a healthcare committee made up of employees. So this isn't something that necessarily can be singly directed. There's a checks and a balance here.
Amendment number four is to amend the FY 19 preliminary budget, oops, wrong one. Oh, that's all right. They all start the same. Amending the preliminary budget by increasing the attrition, salary, and benefits accounts in the amount of $1 million to capture a fraction of the productivity improvements that are achievable with the deployment of contemporary social networking business collaboration and productivity tools, as in Google Suite and Office 360.
Mr. Foster?
Just to be clear, when I think of increasing those accounts, be aware that those are negative balancing accounts. So those are reductions to the budget.
So effectively, if I understand this correctly, what it means is if we did not get a million dollars in resource productivity and we're unable to see the cost benefits during next school year, we would have to take measures to cut departments and/or other expenses throughout the year to make up for not meeting $1 million in productivity.
Mr. Foster?
Have you calculated what percentage that is of the total budget that would apply to? And get a sense of what percentage cut we're talking about?
I haven't, but I can do that real quick. I mean, it's one divided by 572. So we'll run it out and check that out. But the risk is, we hire consultants. When they finish the studies, they tell us what we should do better. We incorporate more Google Suite, Office 360. But the risk is, you're really betting on, are we going to gain a million dollars worth of productivity in that period? And if you take it out of the attrition account, certainly one way that's been done in the past in the district, really corporations writ large, is it's not necessarily you lay people off, but you don't fill vacancies.
So can you just dimensionalize this for me, Mr. Foster? I'm just not 100% sure. Is this, is this a reduction in administrative people that are needed because there's less paperwork to do? Or is it, I, can you just explain to me how this, how this happens?
Sure. If you look at, oh, McKinsey, Bain, or any of the larger consulting firms who are doing work for the Fortune 1000, you'll see one of the areas they've been working on is to try and capture the efficiency benefits that are available from social networking tools to make folks more efficient in their use of time and collaboration. Sort of the total opportunity has been estimated around 20% of support functions. I'm just taking less than one. And this clawback of, I think we're going to have productivity gains that are several times larger than this. And in any given year, it's fairly reasonable to expect we should be able to obtain this amount. This is clearly less of a percentage than the amount that's routinely obtained if we look across our information and communications technology over the last five years as we've consolidated after the ARA fund. You'll see there are significant gains in productivity across each of those years. What this does is essentially say, improve your meetings, improve your collaboration, and work better to make more efficient use of your time. I think one of the challenges we face is we have lots of meetings that aren't very productive. And this is one way to enforce a discipline across the district that says, we've got to do better at that, and we've got to basically manage our projects better and complete them rather than having them lay out for long periods of time and not get completed and then get started up again, back and forth, back and forth. Lot of inefficiencies. This just captures a small portion of that and creates a significant incentive for that going forward.
Can I ask Mike Weckenstein if, I mean, because he's kind of our guru on this stuff, right? Just kind of what his thoughts are.
To Board President Starr. I think over time, we've made a lot of efficiency gains, and we have captured back that time by being more efficient, right? So we've reduced staff over a period of time and continue to do a lot of those functions. And so this is still in that same vein in that, because we have reduced staff and we have implemented some of those tools over time, we have been able to continue to do the mission in a slightly different way and still be successful. And so, so we are always looking for those opportunities. You know, this year, we rolled out several things to help with that. And so, but I think what you find is that there's also a backlog of work that exists right now. And so as we become more efficient, we get after that backlog. And so that's sort of the trade-off. How fast are you getting after that backlog?
One of the efficiencies, which I'd like to say we were working yesterday, was in a new meeting way, just to share. Zoom, our first Zoom statewide was very successful yesterday. You know, in connecting people, we went out ourselves and received a grant to do that innovation rather than, you know, pulling from something else. But there's also a sense of not necessarily non-efficient meetings, but also when you have mission creep. If this would help us with mission creep about, we have meetings because there's more stuff that takes us away. That's also an indicator of not, a lack of focus, which these could also help with.
Thank you. Mr. Alman?
I'm still a little bit confused by it. Although I'm looking at it a little bit more provincially, say inside of a school building, everybody can work more efficiently, but you don't really save any money until somebody gets laid off or a position's eliminated. But if we're looking at the district level, are we talking about lack of travel? Are we talking about, it seems like it would almost have to be either expenses incurred in meetings that we eliminate, or we reduce staff in order to have genuine savings.
Yes, is the answer to all of the above. You're just trying to capture productivity where you can find it as a result of being more efficient in your time and the time that you take collaborating with others.
So I guess, are you thinking that having this explicitly in the budget will encourage people to think about streamlining their work more or make it more top of mind?
It creates an incentive for the executive management team to operate top-down and make sure that those tools are being used effectively to improve collaboration.
Yeah, where does this, you know, we're always going to watch the line on management versus governance. Where does this fall? In saying how meetings should be going, that seems to be creeping quite far over.
Nowhere close, I'm afraid. I have a very different view. It's for us to set a high-level target for efficiency and for the management team to execute. I think this is quite common across the for-profit enterprises I've worked with. So I see it as very, very different.
I'm familiar with this type of work because my husband's in Telkomsel. But I would just like the evidence and what we can do as nonprofits or the nonprofit sector or school boards. The efficiencies, our boards operate differently than private company boards in the private sector. Our administration operates differently. The state has different regs and things. I mean, it doesn't mean it can't be done, it's just different. And I'm certain, I'd be happy to look into it, you know, and take a look. It's not a fear of mine, but it is something else to do.
I think as I, as I look at this, it, one, I certainly always encourage the efficiency. We work on that all the time. But what this, what this does is, but we would start doing quarterly, we would have to do quarterly assessments to determine if the consultant groups caused us to gain a million dollars in efficiency. I.e., we can teach an AA and a secretary to do their job better, but can you actually eliminate a position in order to see those efficiencies? We can train the staff to be more digital and less maybe everyone in a room. But at the end of the day, does it reduce staff members to pay for the million dollars or transportation costs or supply or equipment or any other accounts? So it really would be at some point, the administration would have to, if we did not see a million dollars in pure efficiency gains, we'd either have to reduce staffing or some other cost within the district or recommend future fund balance to make up for maybe not seeing true actual $1 million in gains in efficiency. So it's really, you know, we would certainly have to address it multiple times next year and determine, having established a baseline, at what point do we take other measures?
The other point I would like for these and then the next amendments also is as we're reducing the attrition and expected to reduce costs associated with that, we need to have a balanced budget. So is the, would the amendment be to reduce the use of fund balance in that amount to keep revenues and expenditures in line?
I defer to the administration, whether that or some other way is the appropriate mechanism in this particular case.
Okay, barring any questions. The next one is to amend the 1920 preliminary budget by increasing the attrition, salary, and benefits accounts in the amount of $200,000 to reflect a 1% reduction in district administration and district administration support services. We've discussed in previous instances, district administration is 27.5 FTE in this building. District administration support services is HR, payroll, finance, IT, warehouse, procurement, distribution. So this would, again, I believe the 1% reduction in 510 and 550 would try to approximate 200,000. So, again, personnel.
So, Madam President, I just like, we were just doing some math over here. And in the idea of, sorry to go back, but in the savings of, you know, working in collaboration tools, we did do our first Zoom with a large group. It was 146 people is when we first rolled out the budget. And what that allowed was for principals not to have to travel here. Everybody come and, so we, if we charged them for their hours of work, you know, we saved that hour of work that they didn't have to leave. But what they did was fill that hour, we didn't reduce, we filled that hour of work with other priorities. And so we would really have to look at, when we do find efficiencies, then how do we fill those? We would look for a straight reduction then. But this was just an example because we were really proud of that first time. And it came off well, and people gave us feedback that those type of efficiencies were beneficial to them.
Mr. Foster?
calculation assumes that the vast majority of the efficiencies will be reallocations of time and effort within the district. The level of the recommended adjustment is quite small compared to the opportunity.
Is there anything on number six that we just read?
That was number five. Number six is $700,000 for a 1% reduction in special support services students, which is everything from OT, PT, all of their special ed support services, and also support services instruction and support services student. That's correct. Special services, special support services students apparently would take a 1% reduction and also support. and also support services students and support services instruction. And I don't, I don't know how many of you, how many of you walk around with a budget book everywhere you go, but if you do, like Andy and I, if you look at the budget pamphlet, you can, you can kind of see, and we talked this through during the, during the brief, it would be page 24. So on page 24, you can see support services instruction has, over the last seven years, taken the largest cuts percentage-wise. About 43-plus percent of those cuts were in one of the five or six reorganizations which now led to teaching and learning, which is Ginny Knudsen's department. So that was about 43 cuts in the last six or seven years. The special support services, many of them are IEP-driven. I don't think I can talk what the impact of that might be.
So are these things that are in this building or are they, are they positions that work directly with students?
The bulk of support services instruction is in this building. Special ed support services, not necessarily the case.
And the numbers are not driven by how much we've cut in the past. The numbers are driven by how do we compare to other efficient and effective districts? So going forward, we set a benchmark rather than worry about how much we had yesterday. It's going forward, how do we sort of match folks who are leading in efficiency and effectiveness? That's the, it's a going-forward look.
Yeah, and can I ask Mark one question on, I'm sorry, I definitely want to hear from you Cindy, but Mark, when you talk about the benchmarking, is that, do you know if those other districts are using the same categories for the same people? Is that pretty consistent across districts?
They certainly fill out the same form with the same instructions. From time to time, you will find there's variation there, but the sample size for the districts that I'm looking at tends to be large enough to help cancel out the pluses and minuses that might be occurring with respect to the categories. So I think there's a pretty good argument to be made that there are room for improvement across districts if we look at other districts who are efficient and effective and ask ourselves, could we be doing better in a continuous improvement cycle? So I think that's really the focus. It's not, how much did we have yesterday? It's really going forward, are we competing with folks who are doing well in our line of business?
Let me hear from Ms. Gildian in the mall.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the comparison districts are and how you're coming to those numbers.
Sure. I submitted a package of backup information to Katie and to the President and Vice President, so we've got the information. The comparison districts, there's two sets. There's all of Alaska and all of Wyoming is one set of comparisons. The other set are the top districts in the country, going from Anchorage at 101 up to, I believe, the 30th largest in the census data. And so, I'm trying to look at sort of districts of comparable size in one set of comparisons and then districts in Alaska and Wyoming as the other set, both of which lead me to believe that there's room for improvement.
So districts 101 through 30, you looked at 70 districts?
Yes, and that comparison set.
And was that in comparison to just numbers in the school? Are there SPED numbers, those children with IEPs, their diversity? I mean, did we look at everything or, I'm wondering how your comparison went?
I'm looking, I'm looking at percentage of spend in each category compared to total. And then, across the Wyoming sample set, I looked at ACEs, the adverse childhood experiences and poverty, and some of the other key drivers that you would expect to have an impact on people's support. And so, I use that to validate whether or not Wyoming would be a reasonable comparison set. And so, I believe that you can see, it's a reasonable comparison set based on those key drivers that we frequently cite as reasons why we will have challenges. And the ACEs data is particularly interesting. Wyoming has higher ACEs challenges than Alaska in most of the data that I saw.
But how does that relate to SPED services?
A lot of the SPED services relate to children who had adverse childhood experiences. So I see a lot of those feeding into IEPs.
There is some, since Mark was a superintendent at Wyoming as well as a college ed leadership person, there is a different manner in which the budget is done in Wyoming. Maybe he could show that.
In the past, unless something's changed in the last year, which is also possible, Wyoming does their special ed as a 100% reimbursement outside the model. So what'll happen is, is you will keep detailed records the way Cindy does in her, you know, special ed scenario regarding every child's IEP, the actual cost that it took to deliver that service. And then, you fill all that report out. At the end of the year, you get 100% reimbursement the next year for all of your actual expenses outside the model. Now, again, your only then exposure is whatever your increase in cost was that one year. So if you hired, you know, 10 new deaf interpreters that you didn't expect because of an influx, you have to put those on staff without the money, but then the next year, that is 100% reimbursed. And it's also the same way with transportation as well, 100% reimbursement outside the actual model. So, you know, whether that impacts Mr. Foster's schedule, I don't know.
I don't believe it does. I don't believe they're keeping their two sets of books. I believe their book is a CAFR and all of that expense is recorded. You're talking about the revenue side.
Correct.
And I'm looking at the expense side to match up expenses.
Okay.
Ms. Anderson, do you have any comments?
Well, at this point, I haven't seen what Mr. Foster's been reviewing, but I will tell you that based on our numbers of students that have intensive needs, which means they all require a related service on their IEP, we went up significantly this year from eight, what was it, 878 to 949 this year. We've been increasing our intensive numbers. And so, we have asked for some additional support, which we haven't asked for for many years. In the related service areas, school psychology, OT, PT, we're not asking for more there, but we're asking more for speech as well, for SLPs. And part of the reason also for that is that the number of preschool students and many come in requiring speech services have also increased our numbers to the point that we need some additional staff in order to meet those IEPs.
So those are the positions that were referenced in this? Is that in this section?
I'm not sure.
I think that was the question, yeah?
I'm just saying, right now, utilizing who we have on staff, we are serving our students, but we are, our caseloads for our students, for our SLPs, for our OTs, our PTs, is going up.
I was just trying to understand that point better, the distinction between the support services and actual instruction related to the IEPs.
I think part of the confusion is the rest of us haven't read the studies, but if you look at our intensive needs continuing to grow, that's not happening equally in every district in the state. We seem to be a magnet because we can apply resources. We've, we at least have a good chance of being able to hire resources for students who need more help. I, I don't know in Wyoming if intensive needs or the SPED population was considered in that analysis.
The analysis, of course, looks at prior year and not the current year. So I'm benchmarking you back to where you needed to be before you got the new students. So going forward, you get the increment.
I think I'm just a little confused on the comparables you used. And I know that you brought in traumatic, you know, the assets and that sort of thing, I understand, but there are a lot of kids out there that have those traumatic issues that don't have IEPs. And IEPs can vary in so many degrees as to what kind of needs student needs. And I've never, in my life as a parent or on this board, ever thought that support services had more money than they needed.
We are clearly higher than our peers who have similar challenges when I look back at the data. So while I think everyone is very busy, they may not be as efficient and effective as they could be relative to the peer group. And that's the challenge I want to sort of encourage people to look to.
And I, I'm sorry, is, so all three of these categories, 220, 300, and 350 specifically refer to special ed services?
No, the 220 was referring to special ed services, the predominantly pull-out services for OT, PT, psychology, things like that. The support services students is, the majority of that is going to be nurses, counselors, and new-duty teens, folks who are working in schools, but not necessarily directly instructing students. The support services instruction is predominantly librarians and then also the management departments here, teaching and learning, secondary education, elementary education. And then, there's some smaller portions within IT as well. Does that help?
So, yeah. So Mark, given the special support services, the 220, and that's physical, that's PT, OT, those type of things, right? Okay. And, yeah, and a lot of those we have on contract because we can't find, have you looked at that difference too, basis? Because, you know, there's a difference when you have an employee than when you have a contract employee as far as salary.
That could certainly be an issue. Just keep in mind that what the benchmarking does is it looks back at prior-year data, it doesn't look at the current expansion. So I think the amount of, sort of the starting point is what's being adjusted here, not the increment that we're talking about this year to address the additional students. So I'd start there. It's certainly possible that because we are paying for contract services instead of employees, we are paying a premium. It's been my experience that that premium is not significantly different than the 1.06 that we're paying for the related services after we fully load those folks with benefits that we have. So I think that would be the question that I put back to staff is, is there a significant difference in the fully-loaded cost of an employee versus a contractor?
Okay. Ms. Pritchard? Did you have some? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Okay. I didn't know if there's any other questions in regard to the jobs that the people do?
I don't think so.
Or the outcomes rather than the job.
So moving on.
Okay, the next is to amend the preliminary budget by allocating $250,000 of the resources made available from increasing attrition salary and benefits accounts to capture productivity improvements, to invest in an independent comprehensive review of teacher supply and demand to assess the Anchorage market compensation for salaries and benefits necessary to attract and retain highly qualified and effective teachers across the span of teacher specialties.
So, can I ask, so all of these following things are all dependent on this 1 million capture, correct? Of where we're getting the funds for?
I've certainly constructed the language so it's triggered on whether or not people try and capture the savings. If it doesn't, then they wouldn't be effective.
Okay.
So the Institute for Social and Economic Research did a study statewide of teacher salaries in 2015. And when we were doing our recent attempt to get them to do a new district cost differential, they thought that that recent teacher salary survey was probably, they would have to update it a bit, but they could incorporate it within that district cost differential because the cost of teachers, the salaries and benefits is the largest single component in the district cost differential. And I'm wondering, and that survey was coming in around, if you get the municipal discount as opposed to the state discount, which is larger, about 150. So I'm wondering where the 250 number comes from in this proposal.
If you review the Iser study and similar attempts, they've taken the entire teacher pool and looked at it as a pool. I think it's much more valuable and insightful for us to drill down and look at some specialties within the teacher pool and understand special ed, STEM, career and technical education, sort of separate out and get market intel on each segment where we're having challenges rather than looking at a total salary schedule and talking about the total pool. And that's where the additional costs come from, is really drilling down and understanding your market in more detail. Hence the phrase specialties at the end.
Good answer.
So that really is what you're trying to get at here versus the other studies that have been done?
Yes, I think we're continuing to fall behind in specific areas. I'm reminded of a salary study I did in the 1970s for the University of Alaska, as it turns out. And we're looking at hiring professors. And the difference between the business professor and the ownership professor was growing big enough that they had to break that salary schedule apart so they could actually attract and retain the business professors.
Mr. Donlin.
I have, over the last two years, expressed my concern during our contract phases that I believe we haven't addressed the need to meet the market demand for special education instructors. I felt we should have done that in the contract negotiations. We've missed two opportunities to do that now. And now, we've got a three-year contract where it's going to be more difficult to address that because we obviously are not meeting the current supply and demand or else we'd be able to fill or have, do a better job filling the instructor positions we haven't been able to fill. So I would think that the market is telling us that such a survey is probably needed. And I'm just trying to figure out about the cost and what the return is at this point since we've locked into something for three years now.
And Mr. Donlin, and I think I'm correct in saying this, that SPED teachers do receive a higher salary? Okay.
But I'm correct, I think, in saying that we've got like 50 empty, unfilled positions that we're having to contract out for?
Yeah, we're not the only ones.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on, was that number seven? Number eight?
Number eight is to amend the FY '20 preliminary budget by allocating up to $200,000 of the resources that arise from the productivity improvements attrition adjustment toward consulting services and management and staff training focused on running an effective meeting, effective time management, and effective project management.
Okay, no questions or comments? We'll move on.
Number nine is amending the FY '20 preliminary budget by allocating up to $100,000 of the resources that arise from the hold harmless provisions in the state public school funding formula associated with consolidating elementary schools on J-Bear and reinvesting in the education program of J-Bear elementary schools above and beyond the personnel and support allocations they would normally receive based on combined enrollments. So effectively, during hold harmless, there was some cost savings. So effectively during hold harmless, there was some cost savings. This amendment would request that some of those cost savings be put directly to the schools where those students moved into.
Outside of staff.
Outside of current staffing PTR.
So I'm assuming that piece was not impacted by the governor's budget, he didn't look at that?
Well, actually this one's, when we, when we are using the hold harmless policy or, or bill because we are closing Mount Spur, we actually took those cost savings and put them into the general fund in order to keep PTR the same. So there's, there's not really this color of money that looks like a hold harmless money that was in a separate account where you could clearly say, okay, now we have a hold harmless account, what are we going to do with it? We really just rolled it into the general fund as part of revenue versus expenses to get to a balanced budget. Not that it can't be done, that we could find a different hundred thousand dollars, but, but there's, there's no clean accounting for hold harmless. Same thing with really Eagle River Elementary School. We don't plan on filling a lot of the staffs next year, but we didn't put that money in a separate hold account. We use that to avoid cutting teachers across the board.
Any other board comments or questions? Ms. Foster.
I would just draw your attention on numbers eight and nine, that it is clearly a discretionary item, given the language up to, and it's not a requirement for a full amount. So it really is an opportunity to allow the management team discretion about doing something in these areas.
Did you have anything to say?
To the, to the president, I want to let you know we have done that. Just in, similar to how we have evidence of moving Mount Illiamna and closing that school, there were quite a few additionals and extras that we provided the staff to land well. We already in the plan incorporated that into the two new schools as well as we can share just some, some other things we have done with other schools. So this isn't outside of our practice. I think in closing the first school, which is Mount Illiamna, there was high evidence of taking care of people.
Okay, any other questions? All right, moving forward.
Okay, number 10 is to amend the FY '20 preliminary budget by adding a legislative budget request increment of, did the 68 million make it in? Okay. Of 68 million dollars to reduce class size across the district to 15 in K through three and 25 in grades four through 12, based on the recommendations that arise from the evidence-based model, a zero-based budget development approach linking research-based resource requirements to student performance, and contemporary research in class size matters on the long-term success of students across their school years and beyond to success in life. So effectively, it's 68 million dollars. I'm, I'm guessing by the way I read this, and I talked to Mark twice, so I apologize for not making it clear, that I believe this, your intent is to have this as one of the legislative grants?
Correct.
So are, is, does that essentially mean roughly 680 more teachers?
Forty something, I don't have the number.
I don't have the number in front of me, it was six forty something or six fifty, somewhere in there. And it. We used 104 to 105,000 per teacher because at different grade levels, they, they cost more. So it kind of expands when you're talking large volumes.
And do we have classroom space for this?
I have not done that analysis.
In some schools we would right now, and in some schools we know we would not, especially in Eagle River.
I concur.
And in South Anchorage.
Having, having done the, done the look, I concur at that assessment.
And we typically have a need to hire roughly four to 500 teachers each year, is that correct?
I'll have, if I might, Todd Hess. We have about 250 to 300 in natural attrition every year, but I'm not sure about the hiring. But I would say that having few, too few classrooms and more teachers would be a great problem to have.
Do you want to? How many teachers would be hired?
Superintendent, excuse me, the superintendent is correct. Couple of years ago, we had 360, but that was due to the late legislative action on the budget. And we, we sent out some notices to our employees, even though they were recalled within 30 days, we lost a number of those folks. But our attrition rate has been running somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 325 teachers a year right now.
Certified?
Certified teachers.
So that.
Sorry, would that include counselors, nurses, anybody certified principal?
AEA bargaining unit members, yes.
The total AEA bargaining, so it does include some specialized people as well.
Mr. Donlin.
I was going to say even in buildings where we don't necessarily have an empty classroom, teeming teachers into one classroom is always an option, it's just not one we ever think about doing from lack of resources.
Ms. Mitchell?
I'm just curious if the legislature looked at this and said, you know what, you're right. We have really impacted our students over the past two years pretty dramatically, and we really do want to create an environment based on evidence we know from around the country that really can impact student learning, and they gave us the 68 million dollars. Would it be possible to, I mean, I'm imagining maybe it would take more than one year to hire an extra 640 teachers?
I wouldn't let that stop us though.
Find a way.
However, it's one-time funding, correct? When we're talking about a grant?
It doesn't necessarily have to be, I, I mean, we're, we're asking for a difference now, but it could be rolled into it, they could decide to put it right in. Our ask could turn into the legislature creating something different.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to the ask, I'm just, you know, I always worry when we're talking about one-time funding that, you know, I don't want to have to lay off 600 and some teachers. Mr. Foster?
It's an opening and a negotiation.
Yeah. Ms. Nelly, I mean, Ms. Nelly?
The way it reads though, it says that you move to amend the preliminary budget, so are you saying increase the budget by 68 million dollars?
Increase the legislative budget request to the extent that the legislative budget request has to match the budget, I think then you would amend both of them.
It would increase the total amount, because right now we only have, we have 8.5 million built in as an additional ask, and this would increase that, but that is part of the, that's what made it go over to 800 and some odd million dollars. So yes, I, I would say yes, expenditure and revenue.
We currently put in a budget under state grants, I think we called it state legislative grants, education grants. I think, I have messed up, I think we put 8.75 million. It really is a placeholder because grants revenues equals expenses. You certainly wouldn't hire without the revenue. So it's kind of like the state's designated general fund, it's like the way we run, every year we budget for $10 million in state capital grants, knowing we're probably not going to get them. But if we do get them, like we did a couple of years ago for the roof, then we had, we had this placeholder in which to draw the money in. So it certainly would increase upper limit authority in that particular account, but we wouldn't hire against it without actually receiving the funding.
Madam President, there was actually a, a question earlier that you sent to me in regard to seeing some of the work on the legislative grants, and we initially started it, and then lots of other priorities came to task. But I, I do have just kind of an example of the ideas that, of like a flyer that went out for preschool, but also the other sort of, sort of quantifying some things about the why that were not completely fulfilled. But it's, it's, it's very similar, it's basically you're, you're asking, you know, to, to make this improvement and, you know, that you would specifically promise to use that money for that, it wouldn't disappear. It wouldn't go into someone's gas tank, so to speak.
The, the other reality is after the budget gets passed, we will continue to refine and probably make up new legislative grant proposals and go to the legislation. The fact that it wasn't in the budget wouldn't preclude us from still receiving a grant. We'd have to go, I mean, we do upper limit authority increases after major earthquakes, for instance. We certainly would do it if we received a large grant at some point in the future.
I would say though, in speaking to some legislators, especially as close as just this past Saturday, that the, the ask in the original budget might help them do some work down there.
So I guess my question to you, Dr. Bishop, is how much of an impact do you think this could make on student learning?
I mean, people, absolutely, people are the ones who do the instruction, are teachers. So this would make a, definitely a huge impact on our outcomes.
Okay, if there's no other questions, because we're getting short on time here, we still haven't gone through the others. Was it number 11?
That's correct. Number 11 is to amend the FY '20 budget, adding a legislative budget request for 13 million dollars to provide for half-day pre-K for Anchorage students based on recommendations that arise from the evidence-based model. And contemporary research and on the long-term benefits of pre-K for students across their school years and beyond to success in life.
No questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move forward, number 12.
Number 12 is to amend the FY '19-20 preliminary budget, reducing the transportation services fund expenditures by 1.2 million dollars to help close the gap between state revenues and expenditures and discontinue the use of local ASD financial reserves to pay for the state's constitutional responsibility to provide equitable support for its education system. So in effect, cut transportation budget by 1.2 million.
So, I'll go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
I guess I'm just wondering, is the comment on the equitable support, does that refer to the fact that Anchorage is having to take that out of its operating budget and other districts are not?
That's correct.
And why 1.2 million, because we have an actual gap of 3.4? 4, 3.6?
I wanted to stay within the 5% reduction under the contract and basically roll forward an equivalent amount to the services that are provided by the school district. So it's 5% to stay within that amount.
So is your assumption that the state would have to kick this in or that transportation would have to figure out a way to reduce costs by 1.2 million?
That is the question in the negotiation.
Mr. Donlin? Mr. Donlin?
Another question would be, how would we adjust our current delivery of this service to make up for this reduction in expenditures?
Certainly with transportation, the service would change, just like in the classroom. If we have fewer teachers and more kids to teach, or I would expect that we should, like we would have to underpromise and overdeliver. So I, I wouldn't expect teachers to do what they're doing now, given with 20 more kids in the classrooms, right? So the same is true with other services. We would definitely, the pickups that we do that are closer together, there would be longer bus rides. Right now, we try 45 minutes or less. You could have longer bus rides, you can go up to 90 minutes on a bus ride. If you, you know, spread, you could spread your school start time out to address the bus rides. You could change, you know, stagger between schools to make more efficient use. We've just made it comfortable to have, you know, middle school start on time. If there were co-located schools, they start at the same time, so you don't run double buses if you had enough. We move preschool times on a separate track. We don't transport door-to-door for gifted ed Rogers Park. Special education, we would reduce the amount of time spent at each household. There's lots of different efficiencies, it's, really, this whole budget is about that. I mean, that's what's been asked of us, what's realistic and what is an expectation from the community. But we, we could make adjustments to whatever budget we're given, they're just, the point is, is it going to be acceptable from the community? And, and, but the changes can be made if that's what we want. We, you could find efficiencies in busing. They're not going to be liked, but, so it'd be longer bus rides. Yeah, if you had co-location, I mean, we just look for every little piece that we could to save another bus ride. However, in the contract, there's only so much if you reduce it on the school district side, or you reduce it, you can only reduce it so much on the contract side. So there are limitations to this. And I don't know if 5% is reaching that break, I'd ask Tom if he could comment on that.
To, to respond to, to Dr. Bishop. So in, in the contract that, that the district has with the reliant, quote, "The district may negotiate equitable adjustments to the applicable daily rate. Any equitable adjustment will not increase or decrease the contractor's profit margin." And when we would reach any adjustment, increase or decrease of 5% in the aggregate, that, that would trigger that review of whether or not we are affecting the profit margin of the contractor.
Mr. Donlin?
So to Tom and, or to Mr. Foster, is that 5% work out to the proposed 1.2 million?
It's close.
It's close.
The final amendment for Mr. Foster is to amend the six-year capital improvement plan project tables, one and two, for July 1st, 2019 to July 30th, 2025, to include a catch-up allocation of capital planning funds for charter schools in the amount of $500,000 designed to represent a proportionate share of the charter school student enrollment and ensure that all ASD students have access to capital funding resources. And currently at this time, we only have one charter school in ASD facilities, that would be Aquarian, and all others pay lease or rent. But I think Mr. Roth may be able to talk about the impacts of adding in charter schools.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I, I would just be interested in hearing a little bit more about your reasoning here.
With the exception of Aquarian, all the other charter schools are taking essentially capital funds out of their operating funds in order to afford their capital facilities. It's unfair treatment, we should treat all of our students the same, and all of our students should have access to our capital funding based on their need rather than based on what school they attend.
So are they, do they get the same level of operating funds? Is there any kind of an increment for them at all?
There is no explicit increment in the funding formula for capital funding for our schools. The capital funding comes from other sources.
So, so they're getting money through the foundation formula just as though they were a, a regular neighborhood school that didn't have to pay rent?
Kind of. They, they pay a 4% for all the district overhead that supports them. They would pay for their maintenance if they get it from us, they would pay for their utilities, they would pay for their lease. But it's really tough to say that they're comparable to a normal gen ed school because the other schools, we don't, we don't provide all of the funding minus 4% to them. There's lots of reasons, because a lot of sped is centralized, maintenance is centralized. There's a lot of reasons why you're not going to see a clean breakout.
Well, I, I can share, I mean, a district, all the other district monies goes to all the other programs, so it's not broken out by school. ESSA gets us closer to this because they want to know how much are you spending per student in each school, which I think is a good provision in that to keep us. But if you, if you have a school, so SAVE, it's a choice to have SAVE, to have a program for students. The money for SAVE, SAVE does not generate its own. The money for SAVE, SAVE does not generate its own funds, it's wrapped up, because it falls below the number, it's wrapped up under EAST. So we, essentially, the money, there's additional money that goes to SAVE that you could say is taken from EAST programs. Like, money in a district goes to the district, and then the district, by the school board, decides on, this is what I want for the programs. We made a decision the other day as a board to add more money to Inlet View. That was a decision of the board. That's more money than perhaps another school has. Now, if Inlet View operated separately and just had, they would have those choices. But when ESSA is shared, money per kid, you'll be able to see, program-wise, you know, what's costing more, just straight-out decisions on the service of kids. It's, it's looked at as being more equitable than just equal. And so traditionally, in school funding, you're making a decision, perhaps Girdwood, the transportation of anyone living in Girdwood costs more than the transportation of people living in South Anchorage, specifically because Girdwood seniors are bussed this way. Like, all of those are part of the decisions and the value judgments made at the time. So it isn't in the district's functioning. All money generated at schools doesn't go to that school, it goes to the whole K through 12 or pre-K. If you looked, all of our elementary schools are supporting all of our middle and high schools. It is less expensive. I mean, if you think, think about the opportunities at elementary school, you're in a classroom, the teachers have the kids all day long, where we have lots of multiple opportunities and programs for kids in middle and high school very differently. So it is basically a systems choice of how the funds are divided according to the opportunities for children. Charter schools have that ability through their boards to make those choices, rather than this school board, in, as far as the operations.
And their capital funds? What access do they have to capital funds?
The capital funds that the district actually has goes to voters. And so what I would suggest is allow this to be a voter project. I've, I've supported charter schools building, I've had charter schools support them getting U.S. Department of Agricultural monies, grant monies. I have a strong history in supporting construction of charter schools. However, I would suggest that because this is a community issue, we have to work together as a community to make it happen.
And capital planning funds? Do you believe that there are capital planning funds available to assist them?
Well, I think the capital planning funds come from the bonds. It comes from all the bonds, and I'm certainly happy to do that, if the board desires.
And if we had funds available from prior projects that are complete and funds that would be available then for reallocation, would you have any objection to including the charter school needs in that queue of projects?
I actually would not if the community who originally voted on those bonds was highly, like, it was transparent, because otherwise, similar to people being upset at the state government of, hey, I went into that voting booth and this is what I thought I was voting for. If they don't know that, I would just want it to be highly transparent, because it's always been a sticky situation. I, I wanna support our schools, but the community is the one who voted on those bonds, not me. If it was separate and we had operational monies that, you know, that would be something that I would suggest the board, let's allocate funds. But unspent bond money that was passed under a different pretense, I would always wanna go back to the community to share, like we do. Hey, we took these roofs, you know, we have reallocation for roofs.
During your tenure as a superintendent, have you reallocated any bond funds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Not to charter schools, though.
Okay, so, yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Mr. Foster, would you envision that this funds to use for a catch-up of allocation of capital planning could potentially include an analysis of the benefit to the community of not tearing down existing schools, but rather turning them over to charter schools, as we did with the Aquarian School, which was scheduled to have ended its life with the school district, but has proceeded to have another 20-plus years of life as a charter school?
I might be open to that. Yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
Okay, I think that was the last one, correct?
It was for member Foster.
But I think, looking at Mr. Donnelly's, we've discussed these in our finance committee meeting, I don't see really any changes.
There's one change in that Mr. Donnelly has increased from 1% or 2% to reducing 5% of administrative costs in functions 510 and 550. Other than that, I did not see any substantive changes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to explain, those are alternative amendments. If one didn't pass, I would move the other one.
All right, so given that, I think we have gone over Mr. Donnelly's in our finance committee, and at this time, we have very little time, but any new business we can set. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. I did wanna bring up one thing. Dina, Mitchell and I are looking at maybe putting a resolution together to maybe rename the Ed Center after Betty Davis. So we'll be putting that together, we just, we'll be presenting it to the board, but we just kinda want to get a feel if that was something board members would agree to, or...
I would, I would encourage you to do that. I can recall a specific conversation with Senator Davis regarding this Ed Center and its importance to her, so I think that's appropriate.
Ms. Hildy and then Mr. Holliday.
I would just like, at least to consider using a school that we, children have more inclined to learn about her legacy and have a real connection to the work she did versus the Ed Center, which kids just, you know, maybe, they're not gonna know the school spirit from here or something. Just something to consider.
Mr. Holliday?
That does raise the potential for the fighting Betty Davises, and I think that that would probably be a pretty awesome, yeah, yeah, the fighting Senator Betty Davis, which would be an awesome legacy for her. My only concern is that we don't own this building, and in voting for it, wanna know what would happen if we ever left.
That's a great, that's a great question. I would say that we call it the Ed Center, the Anchorage Ed Center, and so we could call it the Betty Davis Anchorage Education Center. I mean, and I think wherever that was would be the place, but we could certainly look at other places as well.
I would say, if that is gonna be what happens, we should probably stipulate that in the resolution, naming it, that if we travel to another location, that will be, the name will travel with us.
Right. Okay, thank you. Ms. Melvin? Okay. All right? Yes, sir?
I'm fine for the idea, too. I also like the idea of the fighting senators, though.
Okay. Any other new business anybody'd like to bring up? All right, we're gonna take about a 10-minute at ease, and we'll come back for our recognizing staff and students. Okay, thank you.
Yep, $10,000, that's an increase, because it's just an increase in this year's budget, and then I, and, and, and it was explained that that reflects what was actually expected, and I think we should just, I think, I think we should stop overspending.
You should go out there, you go and say, fast forward today, because the governor's being totally unrealistic, you know, than you put out there what you got. I'm, I'm not quite for that, but I do, I think that's... And I'm kind of unfazed.
Well, what do you think?
Well, I'm definitely voting for the two.
Well, I tried to, I tried to create the spirit of sort of questioning, to produce that amendment and have that.
Yeah. And I have not yet.
It's, uh, there's a lot of material on that. I kinda have a bunch of materials, so I wanted to thank you for this. No, no, really, look, particularly, because I'm not, I'm a senator, I'm a senator, I have to say, wanna see what you guys are doing.
Sure. He supported me.
She won, she won, right. But it forced her into a spot where she couldn't, that's all.
She said, was it, yeah, or is it getting, she said, you know, the decision we have to make is to begin a whole, that is, to do a half thousand.
Um, there's some, there's some, you know, so we've got two, we've got the girls combined to South Bartlett, like, two, and so boys in the unit, we've got some men like students for the fundraising, we've got a little, kind of, something.
What was my last question to? Thank you. So the whole prelude, and all the rest of that, all the way to the end, that was all conflation. No, no, we got the answer to your question. She's already done this before, yes, and all the process you used before, which I should have noticed it, and you, you have that conversation, but, but she's trying to, we've got this, we've got this, we've got this, extra level of schools, and, and just, oh, yeah, this looks conference, and, 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 we do it all the time, and we've done it before.
You, you actually had a feeling, so you, you're probably thinking of the ceiling. Yeah, it's just you.
Played the witch cross.
Um, they're, they're arriving, it sounds like there's a backup on our light service a little bit, stuck.
It was so slow working.
Bad, it wasn't bad, yeah. It feels sort of like, just, I just, I just, I just, yeah, that's coming next week, or there's things in the dock.
I was gonna ask the kids, the, I was, I meant to email, I should, I could, I could tell the agenda, and then I was like, I need to email her and make sure she reads it.
I, she's right there, I forwarded her, and she's like...
I'm so sorry, after I sent that agenda, I need to email you and say, I'm good for that.
Yeah, sure, great. Okay, 'cause you had mentioned last time that you wanted to put it on for this gun, so I wasn't positive.
No, I am.
I transferred it over, and I'm like, ooh, I need to check with her.
No, I am.
Okay, thanks.
But we have a little bit to go, you know, two weeks out. Oh, yeah, also. Uh-huh. In the term. Where's our.
Well.
All around.
All right, well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We have some folks coming in the room now. Awesome, awesome. We'll let our guests come in. All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is the portion of the board meeting that we have every two weeks that is a focus on staff and students. And it was a goal about three years ago from the school board at the time to really share their appreciation for the people who make ASD great. And it, uh, are, are the people. It's the students, the parents, the community members, uh, the partners, employees, all of us make ASD great. So without further ado, we do have some guests to honor this evening. Would Akayla, Bernie, Jill Gates, Emily Nightingale, Amelia Nuss, Lindsay Potter, all please come forward, as well with their teacher, Danielle Jeffson, and the principal, Alex Hagler. Please come forward. Kathy. All right, and we're going to give you, um, actually, if our board vice president would help us today. This is our vice president, Ms. Mitchell, and she will, uh, give these, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about these ladies. As reported by KTUU, students at Mirror Lake Middle School are blending and serving up sweet treats to help empower girls in another country. Every Friday, the Coyote Cafe opens to students ready to get their hands on hot chocolate, a pastry, or a mango banana smoothie, as seen in the photo. All of the money raised from the cafe goes to help girls a world away in the Malavi Children's Village in Africa. Help me if I said that incorrectly. Specifically to the Empowering Girls Through Education Club. The cafe is run as a group effort and each girl has a specific job. The cafe is only open one day a week and on average brings in between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty bucks. That's awesome for one day. You make much more than lots of coffee shops that are open all day long, seven days a week. On busy days, that amount is even higher. Last year, the Coyote Cafe raised twenty-five hundred dollars alone, and so far this year, they're at one thousand five hundred. And halfway through the year, um, if they're on that track, they're going to even raise more this year than last. Thank you for helping to support girls through your fundraising efforts. You are who make ASD great and as well as not only the, um, your middle school community, but our entire community. So, uh, it did say that you have different jobs and things. If you could say your name, I'm going to pass the mic, and share with us your name, uh, your grade, and the job you have and what's best about your middle school. How's that? Are you ready, who's ready to start? All right.
Um, hi, everyone. My name is Akayla. I'm in eighth grade and generally my job is working at the front, uh, helping because, you know, when one person is, uh, what do you call it? Uh, taking the money and giving away the orders, the other person has to, you know, put the whipped cream on the smoothies and get more pastries and, you know, run things around. And so I'm the person that works at the front and helps with, uh, maintaining all of that. And it, what's the other question? Ms. Jeffson. Yeah. Ms. Jeffson, our teacher, she's like, you know, whether we're going to stop the smoothies or anything like that, but we all work pretty well together.
If you want to say anything about your middle school, please do now.
Um.
Or you can talk about the project, whatever you like.
Uh, I really. I really enjoy my middle school. Uh, I feel like we have a really great community there and lots of friends to support me. So, uh, yeah, now I'll pass it on to.
Um, my name is Jill Gates. I'm in sixth grade and I cap the smoothies and peel the bananas as the rookie. And it's awesome working with everyone here. I love Mirror Lake. It's way better than elementary school. And, yeah.
Hi, my name's Millia. Um, I generally make the hot chocolates for the Coyote Cafe. I'm in eighth grade. I have to say, Mirror Lake is a great school. The academic program is fantastic and the teachers are very supportive.
Hello, my name is Lindsay and I am in seventh grade. For Coyote Cafe, I do capping the smoothies and peeling the bananas since they capture like a little bit of a struggle. And for Mirror, um, what I like about Mirror Lake is like on every other Fridays, we do like, um, like fun things on every, for every other Friday. And I like, like the sports we do for Mirror Lake, so.
Thank you, ladies. Would you like to say something? No? Um, well, I just want to say thank you for the impact you make in Mirror Lake, as well as, uh, at home in your families and our community, as well as, uh, for children halfway around the world. So thank you so much. You make ASD great. May we take a picture with you? And we'll share it with you if you like.
Okay, Dean, you guys want to, let's really switch it like you guys love. Um, congratulations. Good job. Good job. Good job, you guys. Great speaking. Thanks.
And our next award. This is the, the girls' hockey state champs. We have two hockey championships to announce this evening. I think the school board thought the SB on the front of the jerseys was for them, but it is not for school board. It is for the South Bartlett team. Ladies, please come forward. South Bartlett Hockey. All right. Obviously, this isn't the full team or you wouldn't have lines. You'd be tired out. So I'm going to share a little bit about the ladies and then, uh, turn the mic over, so be ready. Uh, if you just want the captain to speak or whatever, just let us know. So ladies and gentlemen, the South and Bartlett High Schools girls' hockey team is now the best in the state after defeating their Diamond West opponents three to one. Each year, the South Bartlett team has made progress and this year they only lost one regular season game at the Winter Classic, but we do want to let you know it was under three inches of, uh, snow on the ice, correct? The South Bartlett team had the top two scores in the league this year and four standouts and a save average of point nine two five by the goalie, the best in the league. Who's the goalie? Is she here? She's not here. We were going to give her a shout out. With hard work and teamwork, these girls became the best cohesive team in the league. Coach Tom Moore, is Coach Tom Moore here? Coach Tom Moore, come on up here. Your team's here. And Coach Moore said, this is the best team I have ever seen in thirteen years of coaching high school lady hockey. I am also grateful for the coaching staff we put together. We all worked well and we had a great year. Ladies, congratulations on your victory. Your hard work and dedication paid off. You make ASD great. And, um, we've got some hardware brought here today, so let's, you can, uh, if you would share, you've got your medals as well. Share, if you don't want to share something else, just share your name and your grade. And if you're a senior, you get a bonus. You get to tell us, what do you want to do next year?
Um, my name's Samantha Anderson. I go to Bartlett High School. I'm actually the only Bartlett kid here. Um, I'm a senior and I want to become a teacher someday. That's not sucking up.
So, Jeremy is all for you.
Okay, hi, I'm Riley Reed. I'm a senior at South and next year I want to go to college.
What do you want to do?
I want to, I mean, sort of, but not really. There's a lot of things.
Hello, okay, so I'm Amber Steinheifer. I'm a senior at South Anchorage High School and I actually committed to play D three hockey at Alvernia University today. And I'll be studying in nursing.
Uh, my name is Juan Mupe Martinez and I'm a junior.
My name is Zella Aspner and I'm a freshman.
I'm Maggie Martins and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Olivia Carmen and I'm a junior.
And, uh, so the team captain, since you're going to get the bonus because you have, uh, going to college. Uh, why don't you share something about your, your ladies here as the team captain?
All right, so, um, I've actually been playing on this team since freshman year and we haven't won in eight years, which is super special just to have this this year.
And would you like the rest of the coaching staff to announce their names as well? Share your names and things.
I'm Tom Moore, the head coach. This is my assistant.
Phil Pandras.
Hi, everybody. My name is Abby Wilson, first-year assistant coach here, and I absolutely love the group of girls we have this year. Everybody was fantastic.
My daughter, my daughter also right back there is my, another assistant coach with my grandson back there.
Thank you, ladies and coaches. And, um, our final award is, uh, continuing on with, um, we have the Golden Bear Wolverine Joint Team, but we also have, um, and this is not exclusive of ladies because I went to the game and I did see a keeper. That is the first string keeper, I think. At least she played the final game. Um, would the Division One State Champions from Ha- South High School, boys hockey team, not only boys though, please come forward. All right. So. And their principals here, assistant principal, come on forward. Mr. Stone's here to support them as well and they've got their coaches. So I know that Mr. Hauser's in the house. His teams took second, but we'll just let him know. Oh, but the first place team were the Wolverines. And let me tell you about them. The South Anchorage High School Wolverines capped off their season with a six-three victory over Service at the FASAA First National Cup Division One State Championship at Wasilla Menard, Menard Center on Saturday evening. Was it last Saturday evening? It was a week ago. A week ago, Saturday evening. My weeks run into each other. South was able to complete the triple crown, taking first place in the regular season, taking first place in the Cook Inlet, uh, Conference Regions Tournament, and then lastly, the state tournament a week ago Saturday. The Wolverines' record was twenty-two and one. Twenty-three and one. All right, so. But who's counting? Do you want to share the one? No, okay. Do you want to share the twenty-three? We'll go there. Um, only giving up a total of fifteen goals the entire season is the goalie here. There she is, right there. The goalie, yeah. And Principal Pondafino shared that the South Boys Coach, uh, was Coach of the Year as well for the region. The team won the GPA Award for the region and the South Anchorage High School was awarded the Sportsmanship Award at the state event. That is a higher trifecta than winning the others, they believe, which is an all-around character. Um, this is what she is absolutely most proud of. Coach Steve, is it Belde?
Yeah.
Belde. Coach Steve said this, the players and coaches would like to send a special thank you to our manager, Mariah Myers. Is Mariah here? Yeah, there's Mariah Myers. She has been one of the hardest workers since she joined the program in South Hockey. We'd also like to thank administration, cheerleaders, and everyone that helped make this season a true success. Congratulations on your state title and triple crown. You make ASD great. All right, so, um, we've got, uh, a nice, some hardware up here. We're going to, hopefully, we have time. We might as well, let's, we have ten minutes. Let's pass the mic, tell us a little bit about yourself. Those seniors and captains, you might just get a little more, uh, airtime on and share with the crowd here about your school or your team or, uh, what was exciting. I would have to say that what was exciting, they kept the game exciting and it would go back and forth. Well, really, they jumped out ahead and then Service showed a little like, okay, I think they're going to get it. But every time I think Service scored, it.